All right, we are returning back to our convening for our regular board meeting for on August seventeenth twenty twenty-three. And we are going to have everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance. Doug, if I could have you.
We begin. In the cloud of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, going into roll call, uh, everyone is here except for Mr. Olson, who had to step out for any engagement here this evening. Go to our report out of closed session. In closed session, the board took action to approve the recommendation for the appointment of Jose Hernandez as middle school assistant principal beginning August eighteenth twenty twenty-three by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez, can you come? Congratulations.
Good evening, President Olson, board members and cabinet members, Dr. Ibarra. My name is Jose Hernandez, and I am delighted to accept the position of assistant principal. I have been working at EUSD for almost twenty years as an elementary teacher, a teacher on a special assignment, and an assistant principal. I look forward to starting work tomorrow at Mission Middle School. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity in this new administrative position to continue to work with students, teachers, and families at Mission Middle School. Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah, if I can get the approval of tonight's agenda? Any changes? No amendments?
Move approval of the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Passes four to zero. Need the approval of the minutes?
I move approval of the minutes.
A second. Sorry. I have a motion and a second. All vote? Passes four to zero. Going to E one, public comments. This one, okay. And we have Jackie Abrams.
Good evening. Before I start, I would like to say that I'm happy to see parents here. You had kids in this district. They're gonna go to the high school district. We desperately need attendance at those board meetings. The next one is September twelfth. My name is Jackie Abrams. I am an adult and family literacy advocate. I am here to address the board tonight regarding test scores and how they tie in with literacy, and I hope I can do it in three minutes. Our test scores are abysmal. We know that. Um, I will tell you that to have an increase of five percent in math scores is something that should be applauded, but the number that it ended up at is not good. I'm sure everybody knows that. Um, I'm sure I don't know other than Doug. I don't know how many educators we have on the board. I apologize for my ignorance. Um, I'm often asked when I speak around the county, why math scores are so much lower than reading scores? And this is what I tell people, and you probably know if you're educated. The part of the brain that processes math, blueprints, symbols, uses no written language. But math, when you get to math questions, uses written language. You have to be able to read and you have to be able to comprehend. To a young person who has less than normal or less than average or less than adequate skills, a math problem can look something like this. Johnny has twelve apples. He's on a train going to Boston at sixty-five miles an hour. What time is it in Tokyo? There's no answer to that. The problem we have before us is not our test scores. Our test scores are the symptom of the problem. The problem is low literacy. I know that this board is working very hard to address that. I would like to ask you, is anyone familiar with the movie? It's not going to be out in um in national release, but it has just come to San Diego, a movie by the name of Right to Read. Is anybody familiar with that? Right to Read is a documentary produced by LeVar Burton, who owns Rolling Readers. And was uh is authorized by the San Diego Council on Literacy. The San Diego Council, by the way, is um the umbrella organization under which thirty-three independent literacy organizations operate here in San Diego County. Right to Read is a story of kids in um Northern California County. I don't remember which one, but it's a story of what that county is doing to improve literacy skills and what they have been able to accomplish. This documentary has been seen sporadically since it's come out. The farthest north it came was Carlsbad. I would like to know, and you can, I put my email address on my um interest card, and it's also on the cards that I handed out to you. I would very much like to encourage the board to witness that video. If you then approve, I would wholeheartedly encourage you to have every unified employee, teachers, teachers aides, lunchroom ladies, maintenance staff, everybody view that video. Um, it's really, really something important. I think it could help us. I am available. I'm retired. My son says I retired so that even though I've been doing this for thirty-plus years, I could now do it full-time. Um, I'm available to anybody. I speak around the county. I'll be happy to speak to any of your groups uh that might be interested. When I am asked, how many people do you need in an audience? I just say, take a chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no more public comments. We have uh public hearings, none? Okay, uh, E three, report from the California School Associations, Employees Association, chapter one fifty, and yes, he had to work late. All right. Uh, triple E.
Good evening, members of the board. It's good to see you back. You guys excited? You look excited, really excited. Hi, Dr. Ibarra. Hello, cabinet members. We're just super excited to start the year, super excited to see how the elective wheel pops off, and we're just excited, period. Teachers are really happy. I haven't had many complaints about anything. And it's looking great, so we're excited. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. We have any written communications? All distributed, yes. Okay, F one, is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent? Count. Any comments?
Uh, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
All right.
Passes four zero. Went to M one, Business Services, the forty-five day budget revision.
Good evening. Uh, Acting President, Mr. Houston, rest of the board, Dr. Ibarra and Cab, and everyone watching at home and here in the audience. We'll see you at Mission tomorrow. Um, so the state adopts their budget at the end of June. By law, they have to get it done or they don't get paid. We adopt our budget about the middle of June, which means we have to use the most current information available to us uh at the time in the beginning of June, we start to really uh narrow that down to present to you that budget. Uh, but then the most current information we have at that time is the May revision to the governor's January budget proposal. That's the full length of the name. Uh, and if that budget, state adopted budget creates uh material changes to our adopted budget, then within forty-five days of the state's adoption, uh, we must come back before you in the public and uh announce what those changes are. Uh, and now this year, it's not necessarily a material change the to the year that we're in. Uh, the changes you're gonna see tonight are from actually affect mostly the that all of them affect last year. Uh, but I'm gonna go through it anyways for you because we still need to make sure that we're informing the public in the board of where we stand with our budget, even if the changes are relatively minor. So let's dive in to it. There it goes. Uh, so this was our adopted budget. Um, and remember, we talked about this back in June. Our uh ending balance is far greater than our reserve uh requirement, so uh we're fiscally solvent, positive certification for our current year budget. Then here is the forty-five day revised budget. Try to find the changes in there. I'll do it for you. Here's the changes. Uh, so as you can see, they're not changes within the current year's revenue or expenses or any of that. It's actually in just the beginning balance of the restricted column. Uh, and that's because it's uh things that affected in the in the current budget year affected things that we had in our adopted budget for the previous year. So let's figure out what that is. Let's dive deeper into the changes. And so at the beginning of last year, uh, in that budget, there was a couple of big one-time uh grants from the state. And so the first one was the Learning Emergency Recovery Plan or the Emergency Block Grant. Um, and at the time, our our entitlement was about twenty-three million, round numbers about twenty-three million dollars. And then uh we went through the January proposal. There was no change to that proposed, but then in the May revision, the government, uh, governor, sorry, proposed to cut that um by about twenty-three percent. For us, that resulted in about a seven million dollar cut off of what the entitlement of twenty-three million. But then, when the state finally adopted their budget at the end of June, they restored uh some of that proposed cut. So we adopted our budget, like I said, on what the May revision numbers were, including that inclusive of that seven million dollar cut. But once they adopted their budget, that turned out to be only about a three million dollar cut for our district. And so four point one uh million dollars there was brought back into our budget. And again, this was last year's entitlement, and so that's why it lives into the beginning balance of the current year. Then next was the Arts and Music Instruction Materials Grant. Uh, that originally was to be eight million dollars for our district. Uh, in January, the governor proposed to cut that by fifty percent for all districts, and that stayed the same during the May revision. But then the state adopted their budget, and they changed that fifty percent cut to a six percent cut. And so we adopted our budget on the most current information of a fifty percent cut. And now with this new information from the state's final adopted budget, we were able to put back into our restricted fund uh three point seven million dollars that we weren't counting on at the time of our adopted budget. And then finally, in the twenty-one, twenty-two year, the state uh issued a grant uh to start up startup funds, essentially seed money to start our universal TK program. Uh, they actually then during the course of last year renewed that grant. Uh, that was not included in our adopted budget, but it's shown here now, and it's also in the restricted uh fund. And so that was about one million dollars. And so all those together total up to the eight point nine million dollar change or or increase, if you will, to the beginning balance uh of the current year budget, uh all of which were entitlements from last year. Those are the changes. So the next steps, uh when it comes to anything fiscal and budget related. Uh, the next time I'm gonna stand before you and talk about the budget is not long from now. I know you're looking forward to it. Uh, in September, at our September seventh meeting, we'll be presenting our unaudited actions. And so that's where after we close the books, balance the checkbook. This is where we landed. Um, no more guessing. We know exactly where we are now uh as of when we were present this to you in September. Then, now this is the interesting one on this slide, and that's October. Uh, as you may have heard, uh, maybe you haven't, but that the state uh has delayed the due date for a collection of taxes, corporate, personal taxes till October of this year, as opposed to much earlier in the year. So they adopted their budget on a projection of what they thought those revenues would be, and there's lots of stories out there that are pessimistic and lots that are optimistic. And I'll tell you the most recent story and news we're getting is it seems to be much more optimistic. Meaning that it's very likely that the revenues do come in uh at what the legislature had built their budget around. But we won't know for sure, and uh not to want to make any any guesses behind what the news is saying. Uh, so once October comes, if you see in the news that good news, tax revenues are at or above what they were projected, that's great news, and we should expect really no changes to happen in the current year. If we hear the news of that the tax revenues come in less than projected, less than what the state adopted its budget on. Really, how much less is gonna determine what could happen next? Now, one of the things, and I don't, and it's just a, it's a fact that in before COVID, or as we went into COVID, there was something called deferrals as state revenues were down, and that's where they delay paying us, and we get paid a certain percentage of our annual entitlement over the course of each month. Uh, and they would reduce that in some months and then pay us back in months into the next year. That's a little trick, so they pay us next year for what they owe us this year. Uh, that's all we could predict that may happen if tax revenues come in much lower than what what's projected. That's not the outlook at this point, but that's just um one of the impacts, as I brought it up here on the slide today. But then after October, we'll really know all that for sure, and we'll come back before you to show you our first interim, and that's the be the first revision, actual revision. Like tonight, what I'm showing this information is not an action item. It's just for information. All of what I'm telling you tonight would be included in our first interim uh budget revision, and also included in that will be our updated ADA projections, as we'll have been in school for a few months, so we'll have a better idea of where that lands. I mean, we're only in for a couple of days so far this year, so it's a lot, really very early to tell where we're at now. Uh, but we'll know, have a much better idea of that when it comes to December, and I'll present that to you then. And then we'll also have a an adjusted uh multi-year projection that will have the changes I showed you today, the the changes to the Learning Emergency Recovery Plan and the Arts and Music Grant, uh, as well as any FTE changes. That means any staffing additions perhaps that we've made since we adopted our budget in June, as we go into the year, and we add positions to meet the needs that we encounter as we move forward into the year. And then, of course, if there are any impacts because of the state tax uh revenues from October, we would include that also into that multi-year projection. So it's, we would ask the budget at the the board at that time to adopt a revised budget that would be inclusive of all the most current information at that time. Questions?
Um, so, so we we have an additional eight point whatever million or eight point nine to our restricted fund. Um, so do we have, do we have any like departments or uh anybody's budget cut previously that it's been restored because of these or?
Okay.
I mean, I know that's a little nuanced, but you know.
So these were uh one-time money. So so one thing like the Learning Emergency Recovery Plan, or we like to call it the LERP around here, because we love our acronyms ever since the COVID era. There was like fifteen different acronyms for funding sources. So the LERP uh was a plan we stood before you before, and and that was involved a funding the wheel, intervention teachers, things like that. Now, even with this cut or with the cut that originally wasn't May, that seven million cut, now it's only three. We still have the money we need, the resources we need to carry on with our plan as it is for the current year. Uh, if anything, we would make an adjustment to the plan in some future year, but at this point, we're moving forward in this year uh with the seven or now the three as planned, as we stood before you. So really no impact uh on that one. The music uh and arts grant, we actually had heard before even the January proposal that that was gonna be cut in half, and then it became more official in the proposal in January uh from there. Um, and we had not charged anything against it or made a plan for the other half of that at that time. So in fact, that's now money that we would now have to come back and have a plan for at some point uh in the future uh based on that. And then the, of course, then the TK grant, that's just nothing was cut. That's just an additional amount of money that we just didn't have in our adopted budget.
Okay, so all the budgets are the same, and if anything, they've gotten more money.
If anything, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, it's a long way to answer that. Thank you. Thanks for hanging in there.
Is there, is there any uh timeframe in which that money has to be spent? Because it's time monies, or is there, is there a cut-off date?
Yes, and I don't want to guess at it. I want to say that the LERP was twenty twenty-six. Do we remember the other one? The music arts one is a twenty-five? Or twenty-six as well. It's multiple years. It's it's several years away. It's not in the next year.
We we have no rush.
Correct.
We can sit back and look at what what needs the district needs, and at that point, then fill in that money.
Yes, and that's why like our LERP uh money paying for the wheel, that plan we had presented to you was a three-year plan, right? And that tied into also the expiration dates of some of that money is as well. In fact, that plan is even shorter than the amount of time we had the LERP money for, which I think does expire in twenty-six.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah. Any other questions? So sitting over here, this is a pretty huge ending balance, but with the instability in the state budget and sort of all of the unknowns, it feels pretty good to be sitting with that amount of money there, so.
Well, that one of our main goals or one of our four focus goals in this district is fiscal solvency, and we take that charge very seriously, and I think that that's reflected in in what you see there in the ending balance.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, sir. N one. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, Expanded Learning Opportunities Plan.
All right, good evening. Good evening. So uh this evening, we're gonna be uh providing some information about our uh rapidly expanding, expanded learning opportunities program. Okay, so just a little bit of background here. So um ELOP um is how we refer to this program. Um, it's a Californian initiative, and really the focus of the program is to ensure that we are developing our students' academic, social, emotional, and physical needs and interests. And the intent there is really to ensure that we are um providing enriching experiences before and after school, uh, expanding the student day for to up to nine hours, as well as offering summer sessions and intercessions. So that is, in fact, one of the requirements of the ELOP program is to offer thirty additional uh nine-hour days uh beyond the school calendar. The state program is really uh designed to help address the impact of of COVID, the challenges our students have faced. And the purpose is not only uh to reengage our students and our educators in the school experience, but also to create opportunities for them to thrive. So a key component uh is that the ELOP experiences provide additional opportunities um and without replicating the school day. So they want it to be something that's enriching to their day. Um, and again, something that goes above and beyond the actual school day. Our ELOP funds, our ELOP programming works in parallel with our existing ACES program. And so as we ground all of our work uh around our district vision to actualize the potential of every learner, we are really excited to be able to carry that through uh within our ELOP programming. Additionally, um as a primary goal of the program, again, to provide enriching opportunities for our students, the team is continually um making efforts to be intentional in the type of planning that is happening and in the design of the program for our students. So we really see our ELOP experiences as just another way to engage our students and to really engage our students and our staff around the work towards ensuring that we are progressing towards the implementation of the learner profile and the framework. And so we wanted to go ahead and uh take the opportunity just to share some of the highlights from the last school year. Um, and before moving too far along, I do want to go ahead and acknowledge uh Rick Osir and Shannon Bralish, who've really uh led the way in the implementation of that program um at all of our schools. Yay. And so um last year was really a year of many firsts as we um really dove into this program. And the challenge really was trying to develop a program, um a very expansive program where there weren't any real models out there. So even in researching and and trying to see what other districts were doing, um, we're we're proud and pleased to be able to share that EUSD has really uh gone uh come to the forefront in in this endeavor as we've been trying to really, uh, we have amazing people and an amazing team that's really thought carefully about what we can do to make this a success. And so we knew the potential that the program had um and really wanted to ensure that um it was successful at all of our sites, and a key component to that was uh the fact that there was a decision there that we may uh went ahead and recruited site liaisons. And so the site liaisons were really key and really um had a lot of responsibilities around recruiting the teachers to teach the classes, advertising the classes to students, um, really tracking the student interests that existed on campus, forming the classes, monitoring waitlists and attendance, supporting teachers, communication, supervising students at dismissal as well, really serving the as that liaison between the district and the school site. So they really were the glue that held all of these programming, all this program together. The positions um are held by certificated staff who work beyond their school day to serve in this essential role. So additionally, we had many other firsts as well, um offering uh that no-cost before and after-school program at all of our in-person uh schools. Um, contracting with many vendors or to deliver and to provide enrichment classes. Also, with their, we created a lot of um some unique opportunities to increase student engagement, including First Lego League. We had eleven teams around the district that uh began and participated in that. Uh, Girls on the Run, where that was uh existed on our campuses, but that really also expanded. Um, we had twenty teams uh participate in that program. And again, we also were able to see the launch of our camps, um, our sixth grade camp, as well as some onsite camps during the intercession times. So we really are um celebrating those things that happened last year, but also looking at how to continue to grow and expand that. As I mentioned, part of the requirement for ELOP is the fact that they should be, we should be offering these thirty additional days of nine-hour programming. And as you can imagine, that's, that can be a challenge for many districts in trying to find um staff and find a a way to be able to offer that. Um, but in our district, again, we're so fortunate. We have amazing staff that wanted to be a part of this program um after school and even on the breaks. So the team also worked with our uh agencies, our partners, to also solicit help from them, which really allowed for us to be able to offer the before and after-school programming, also to design and implement uh an engaging summer program. And then as well, of course, the sixth grade camps during winter break, as well as the onsite spring break camps. Yes.
Question, if I could, thirty additional days of nine-hour programming, does that mean per program? Or does that just mean for the whole district?
For the whole district.
For the whole district regardless of, okay, all right.
And so last year, what we were able to see is four hundred and fifty-eight after-school enrichment and intervention classes that were offered to our students. We had over five thousand five hundred students participate in the after-school enrichment and intervention classes. Approximately, we had over three thousand students participate in the before and after-school programs. And then this is just a sampling of some of the examples of the offerings that were uh given at the different school sites. So you could see there, the list is pretty um diverse, and and everything from gardening to roller skating, uh drum line, um musical theater, just to name a few. And those continue to um to expand uh as teachers really kind of get in touch with their own interests and passions and decide what is it that they might want to be inspired to share with the students. And so as the team um is committed to continuous improvement, we always are trying to reflect on our practice um and really receive some feedback from our stakeholders about the program. And so we have some of that to share as well. So we surveyed our parents and our students to have a sense of what they felt about the program, and so ninety percent of the respondents reported that they would recommend the EUSD uh after-school classes to others. And then we had ninety-three percent uh of parents and students surveyed uh reported high satisfaction with the after-school classes. And so we also surveyed the participating teachers, and ninety-five percent of those uh respondents reported that the after-school classes had a positive impact on students. In addition to that, we we kind of had a a hypothesis, a belief uh that that teaching these additional hours would result in a positive impact on our teachers that were participating. And so what happened there is that as these teachers who are identifying their own passions, their own interests, and then having this space, this opportunity to bring that to the classroom, to their students through ELOP was really an amazing, an amazing component and just a tremendous benefit. So we found that eighty-eight percent of the teachers reported that teaching in the after-school classes had a positive impact on them. And that percent is actually based on the respondents who had a rating of four or five out of five. And so a handful of the respondents rated a three and only two respondents provided a score of one or two.
Real quick, in reference to those ones and twos, did we get any feedback and so that we could then next year make those fours and fives?
We have some, on an upcoming slide, a little bit more information as far as some of the general pieces as far as those specific teachers, but yes, I think that some of the scheduling was, was a challenge. It is a commitment.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you.
Yes. And of course, our principals a hundred percent saw value in the program, positive impact on students and on participating teachers. So some of the specific comments there, as far as some of our glows and grows that we did want to share, positive points that were taken, people really appreciated just the opportunity to learn a new skill, the variety of the classes that were offered. They really commented on valuing the socialization aspect, increasing a general enthusiasm towards school and building relationships, and of course, that it was no cost and convenient that it was on campus at their sites. For areas of improvement, some of the comments were around better communication with our, from our after-school providers to families. More sports, they wanted to see. Also, they wanted to see more active supervision from the after-school agencies. And just more enrichment classes specifically for the younger students. They wanted to see those more variety even for the TK students were some of the comments there. And of course, this is a great feedback for us as we continue to work with our, our agency partners. And so typically, we actually give a separate report about our summer programming, but because it is a component of ELOP, we thought we would fold it into this presentation as well. And so we are going to go ahead and just highlight some of the summer program. Again, that's part of that thirty-day additional nine-hour programming that that would, that is part of that fulfillment of the requirement. And so this year's summer program, lots of students served. We served fourteen eighty students, one thousand four hundred and eighty students in the general ed setting. And that really was with a hundred teachers who were participating, who were willing to participate in the program and about twenty-three additional support staff to make that happen. We also were able to serve two hundred and twenty students in our ESY or our special education summer programming. And again, with twenty-five teachers willing to participate and about eighty-five additional pairs to support that program for our most needy students. We held the program at six school sites and there was a strategic shift this year in the programming. We wanted to really emphasize the, the idea that we defined the summer program to be a nine-hour day. So in the past, it was more of an optional staying after in the afternoon, but we really said that we were encouraging and that the program was a nine-hour day with families or students having the option of early release. So that slight shift really was, had a great benefit in that we were able to go ahead and see an increase in participation. And so that morning time included the three and a half hours of academic time and enrichment, and that was with our EUSD teachers. They, of course, were provided breakfast and lunch, and then the remainder of the day was with our partners, the Boys and Girls Club or with the YMCA. And so again, we served between two hundred and forty and three hundred, three hundred students for the full day at each of those elementary sites this summer. Additionally, just the design of the program there, it was very student-centered this year. We wanted to ensure that it was highly engaging for our students, trying to bring in those aspects of the framework in the design of this program as well. And so for our elementary students, we included kind of during that three-hour time, equal time spent on STEM, on math, and on enrichment. And then, of course, for our middle school, really tried to bring in some new aspects of for their experiences, included financial literacy, some world of work, as well as the Z space or career exploration. And so as I had mentioned, the elementary program had those three classes kind of with equal times dedicated to math, to STEM, and to enrichment. And that's slightly different than last year's program, which was just focused on math and on STEM. And so for the past two years, we've incorporated a specific kind of hands-on, engaging summer math program for the elementary students. And so we went ahead and took a look at that data that you could see here to determine some student growth. And each of these groups, of course, are separate, different students that made up, that make up these for the different years. But the data again is very helpful to us as we continue to try to search out ways to ensure we're able to sustain the growth.
Dr. Phil, yeah.
Yes.
On this particular data, at what point, at what point was this the assessment administered or how, where is the data from?
It was a pre and a post. So there was a pre-test and a post-test given at the beginning of the program and then at the end of the program for these students.
So is this the post-information?
It is the growth information.
Okay, so for example.
That demonstrated growth. So for, if you look at first grade in the orange, seventy-nine percent of the students demonstrate, demonstrated growth from the puppy and the post.
But it doesn't indicate how much growth.
Correct.
And it doesn't, also doesn't indicate proficiency.
Correct.
Okay, it's just this percentage showed some growth from wherever they started to wherever they ended.
Yes.
Thank you.
Correct. Additionally, in the summer, there we went ahead and also had some specific math intervention that was provided to students. And that was using a new math intervention program called Bridges. And that is, was for tier-three math intervention. And again, the idea there is that that was, students were given small group instruction from specific, specifically trained math intervention teachers to fill in those very specific gaps for students. And so again, we wanted to have a sense and gain input from our stakeholders around the summer programming. And so we always want to, we're always open to hearing that feedback. And so we surveyed our program parents and ninety-two percent of them reported high satisfaction with the summer program. And then additionally, we looked at the academic program. So our question was if they would re-enroll in the academic portion of the day, that morning block, and ninety-seven percent said that they would enroll again. And then in the after-school program, there was a similar question, would you re-enroll in the afternoon after-school portion of the program? And again, ninety-three percent said that they would. And so regarding our summer program, we also wanted to be able to reflect and see, really kind of understand the perceptions of how that went. And so here are some of those glows and grows. Generally, I'd say everyone enjoyed the enrichment activities, the design of the middle school experiences, and the longer day offering. Some specifics around the areas for improvement would be for better communication to families about the after-school plans and the trips. And again, that's great feedback for us as we continue to work with our partners. And then we included one specific quote that really just shares the general sentiment of appreciation for the activities that were provided and then specifically the field trips also for, for the students. And so looking ahead, then, we do have an ELOP plan that does need to be reviewed by the board every three years. And a lot has changed since the last time that we shared the ELOP plan with you. That was back in the spring of twenty-twenty-two. And so we've captured a lot of the changes in the updated plan that we're presenting to you for approval tonight, which was attached to the agenda. And so really, the CDE does require districts to use their template for the ELOP plan, which is what was what you'll see. And following that template is how the plan was written. Each section of the plan describes our program in far more detail, incorporating all of the new components. But again, in the spirit of that continuous improvement, some of the many changes to grow the program for this coming year include having some clearly articulated program goals, being highly intentional with the opportunities that we're providing, ensuring that there's some student voice and choice in the process as well. And then expanding the opportunities by increasing sports and enrichment classes, offering additional intercession and camp opportunities, and then also really looking at the middle school opportunities of what we could do to really try to continue to re-engage them. So once again, we are, we have a robust budget to support all of those plans moving forward. And so as we do strive to be very intentional as we move forward, as well as really being responsive to the input that, that you had shared with us about really wanting to define and identify some desirable outcomes and goals, we wanted to go ahead and share that. Here are some of our proposed objectives and goals that we believe can be supported by the ELOP programming. So we know that we want to be increasing school connectedness. Over the last two years, we have seen a decline in school connectedness based on our, our CHIC survey. From the twenty-two to last year, the elementary score went from sixty-seven to sixty-four percent of students feeling connected. And then the middle school went from fifty-one to forty-seven percent of students feeling connected based on the CHIC's data. And so what we wanted to go ahead and do is say that we'd like to see an increase, a five percent increase in school connectedness based on that survey for students who are participating. The other aspect there is for teacher engagement. So we also want to continue to see increase in teachers and how they're feeling connected to schools. So we want to see a five percent increase in teacher satisfaction and connectedness of participating teachers. And then for attendance, you'll see there, we would like to see a three percent increase in daily attendance rate of the students who are participating, as well as a decrease in chronic absenteeism. So we're trying to kind of drill down to really see that this is having an impact of the students that are in participating in the program. And so we know what our data was, our district data around attendance. Last year was ninety percent, pre-COVID was ninety-five percent. And so we really want to be trying to be very intentional in the work that we're doing and trying to measure the impact of those things. And so you'll see there for the goals, the three percent increase in daily attendance, that's for student attendance, and then a ten percent decrease in the chronic absenteeism of the students who are participating. Any questions? And so to end, we do have a little video that kind of shares some of the highlights so that you can enjoy that and see some visuals of our students in action.
All right, any questions? All right. Um, so thank you. I think what I have is more comments rather than questions. But I just, I just want to say how impressed I am with our ELOP program and how pleased I am at the integration between the ACES and the ELOP. That's been pointed out by the county and certainly by us as being just tremendous and a model for all of San Diego County. Just really happy that our kids are getting this additional enrichment. And I'm just really hoping that we continue with, with that budget that we have to reach out to more and additional vendors to find more people who can provide more opportunities for our students. So we can get, our numbers are tremendous. But I know we can get especially the number, the overall number of students participating. And, you know, and work to make sure that each of our programs is in some way supporting literacy and, you know, and math skills. Question about summer school, first of all, were we at capacity for students this year?
Yes, I believe we were.
Okay, so we just didn't have any more teachers to hire to open additional classes? Is that the general thing?
There's always that balance, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, thank you. And so that, that's my thing. And as everybody knows, I'm really into the, the natural world, looking at career exploration in both the recreation area, outdoor careers. And so I, I, I hope very much we continue to look for additional opportunities for collaboration with various community groups to expand that, as well as the sports, as well as other enrichment programs. So thank you.
No, that was really a great presentation. And I mean, the program is, has grown tremendously since last year. So it's amazing. I did have the opportunity meet with Rick yesterday, so I kind of got a preview of this and kind of filled in some of the blanks that I, because when you guys first took it on, I wasn't on the board. So I was, he was filling me in. I did have a couple of questions on it. Um, I did have a couple of questions on it, um. So the site liaisons, are they full-time or no? They're just part-time sort of.
They're just part-time, they're paid extra hours to work after school, I believe it's for two hours after school.
But they're teachers.
But they're teachers, right? And so and they're and they're managing all the coordination and everything like that, so. Because my, I think the enrichment is great, but I still want to see more academics. Component to it, you know, to use that extra time, you know, if they're there till six. You know, use, obviously, you know, they need a break and they need to snack and they, you know, everything else that goes with it. Um, and I I talked to Rick about this, of like how how you guys are planning and I think it's in the planning stages of kind of. Meshing those two together and overlapping, so there is more of an academic. Component to it. On top of all the, it, you know. Rollerblading and the cooking and everything.
Academics in there.
Get the academics in there because it integrated, so it's a fun, you know, they, you know, the I they're not.
They'll never know.
They're not going to come there and sit there and do extra math for two hours, they're not like my parents crazy who put me in math like that. You know, no sports, just math, um see how well I turned out, um anyway. But I I I just, I think it's a great opportunity to have that extra time with students, especially, you know, the students that need it. Um, and to provide, you know, especially if we have teachers there, um and they can do it in creative ways, uh because, you know. Uh, you see the decrease in math scores though of the growth in like fourth and fifth grade.
Yeah.
And so that's kind of interesting because it seems like it was a more robust program this year than it was last year, am I correct on that?
Yes, definitely, it was, but you're right and and that is um what we see with fourth and fifth graders, right? I mean, as you go up in the grades, as far as their performance, their needs, the gaps that exist. Uh, for them, but absolutely, that's something that we want to continue to look at.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, uh, yeah, because I mean, you had the the four or five goals, but I mean. None of them had like an academic goal to it, right? Like, no, none of them, like the, for the last page, you know, obviously, those are important objectives, but again. I think we're also working on academic excellence and achievement and I would like to see that as one of our proposed objectives. Is that we're putting all this extra time, which will come with, you know, if we decrease the chronic absentee rate and everything like that, that will go with it, but I think. You know, that should be one of our objectives is increasing the academic achievement of the students.
And maybe that could just be measured as part of our overall.
Yeah.
District program through.
We 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 heard you loud and clear, we're going to put metrics to a lot of these. Things because they're all going to be interrelated.
Right.
And uh you're right, engagement, increased attendance, the theory of action is. That should lead to increased academic achievement. When we get to like the other big initiative we're tackling is going to be the enrichment wheel. The other big initiative, so that's where you're going to start to see a lot of the um. A lot of the other academicals, the intervention, we're going to want to see strictly academic roles. Um, when we're looking at the ELOP, this is really. Get them to come to school to sit through the academics, hopefully they they will stay very akin to. Sports, some kids in high school, the high school sports, that's what they're coming to school for because they really look forward and you have to maintain a. GPA of three, you know, uh, what is it, two-point-oh?
Two-point-oh.
Right. So there there's, yeah, we're elementary. So a lot of this is the engagement, this one truly is about engagement and you will see the academicals and definitely all our plans. Are going to be tied together so that we can see and measure those.
Right, because I would love to see. This fourth grader went to the ELOP program, this fourth grader didn't.
Yeah.
Do they have any difference?
And because we're going to be, because we're going to be uh. I don't want to say tracking, we're going to be monitoring the progress, you know, the academicals, we're going to also then disaggregate disaggregate and say. Let's now look at the kids who were part of the ELOP program for X amount of time. Now, did we see an in- increased attendance, increases, then we can actually look at their academic progress.
Right. No, I think, I mean, just the variety of programs available, the at the different sites, the full-day summer school was fantastic. And I mean, to have that many, four hundred and fifty-eight. Different classes to organize and manage, I mean, that's site liaison position seems, it seems. You know.
They weren't all at the same school.
No, they weren't, I know, but they, but I mean, still, the, I mean, just taking that extra step, so we didn't put it on the principals to try to organize and manage.
I know.
You know, get a teacher some extra hours, which is always good, I'm always. Like I said, I don't, I signed up for everything I could get for an extra hour pay, but um, you know. Uh, there's a lot, so kudos to you guys for putting that all together, because that's, it's a lot of programs that you had to develop in the course of a year. And put out and I think next, this coming year will be even greater.
Really was something for everyone.
Right?
Yeah.
Exactly. And I think, you know, word spread, I'm sure more teachers this year will be interested in. And participating, they, you know, they can see their their colleagues do it and like, oh, I do have a passion in this, you know, so. Anyway, thank you so much.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you, yeah.
All right, board members and board president reports.
Oh, yes, this is uh the the plan that was included.
Okay.
Yes.
Move approval of the expanded earning opportunity plan.
For two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four second.
A motion is the same, all in favor? Four passes four to zero. All right, now we're on board. Reports.
Thank you. Well, I'm really excited. I'm really, uh, great school year, my kids went back to school today, so I'm extra excited about that. Um, my house was so quiet, it was so lovely, so I appreciate all the teachers out there and staff, support staff who take on all these kids. Um, I attended the uh welcome back meeting and one of the, one of the staff that I ran into and talked to. He he wants a ten-week summer and I said, um, I have three students at home, I would not want a ten-week summer. You know, different viewpoints, um but I uh. I attended the welcome back event, which was fabulous, the student presentations, I don't want to say everything about it because Joan was there too. Um, but it was really great to get the whole district together. Um, and then, you know. Feed them, which is always good and the vendors were great, it was, it was a great event, everyone is in a good mood, excited for the school year. Um, and then I attended the uh personal commission meeting, both the special one and and the one tonight. Um, and that is my report, I think. Yeah.
Thank you.
And I've also heard, although I was not there, many, many good things about the back-to-school event, just absolutely fantastic. Uh, very good comments um about the summer program from a variety of parents, just. But so many opportunities and looking forward to see that continue to expand. I'm very happy that all the schools got back open. Uh, apparently without glitches, so that's wonderful. Um, thank you to all of the classified staff, especially. Classified staff, office managers, administrators. And of course, thank you to all the teachers who are back and working hard this week and next week and throughout the year. To make students feel welcome while focusing on academics. Um, so uh that is it, I'd also like to shout out to Mr. Andrew Andy McGuire, who was. Um, uh, brought into the Escondido Rotary Club uh after five yesterday. And really looking forward to all of the community. Projects that we're going to be able to accomplish. Through all of the various service organizations that our cabinet and staff are involved in, so. Um, congratulations, Andy, that is a very exclusive club you joined. Bring her, yes, yes.
Don't get too excited. So, yeah, and I I really enjoyed the uh welcome back event as well and I'd like to thank everyone who was involved in. Planning and setting that up, it was an amazing undertaking, taken, taking sixteen-hundred. I believe we were welcomed back and the enthusiasm was. Palpable, it was just really nice to talk to people who were so excited to be starting the school year and I will tell you my favorite part. That were the performances. I hadn't heard the strings in a long time. And to see those little ones with their their bows and their little violins, it was just really heartwarming. And I'm so grateful that we that we do that and grateful to the, to the people who who um have have instituted that and continued to support it. And then um. Also, of course, ignite, always a pleasure and the folklorico dancers just really, really well done. So thank you very much for that and of course Conway.
All the Conway kids.
And they're and.
Fantastic.
The kickoff, so yeah, the Conway kids just really impressive, they never um. They don't let us down and then the interviews too were interesting, but the kids were the best, so thank you very much for that.
All right. And I don't have a report, I just wanted to make a quick comment, um in the. Consent. Calendar, we had the approval of C Camp. Which I was really excited to see that we were able to bring that back and I believe we've actually increased the number of kids. For this uh C Camp, so I just hope that we can continue doing that. And that is such a great program and it really, I think it's something that we, the kids deserve, just like the. Sixth-grade camp and all those other fun things to have them to have the, absolutely. Um, and other than that, uh, Dr. Warren.
Just wanted to again uh share the sentiments that thank you to all our classified staff and all our certificated staff for. Making the first few days uh very smooth to welcome our families and students, so congratulations. Look forward to a great year, also wanted to thank everyone who was involved with the back-to-school event, it was um. Truly inspiring to see all our kids and wanted everyone to see what I get to see from time and time again going in and out of the classrooms. Um, that all the amazing talent that we have throughout our district. Um, with our students, so and that was just a snapshot, we could have kept the kids on and on, but it was finding them. To get ready over the summer, so a lot of rehearsals happening that morning, so. But thank you to all the staff that was involved in the preparation of this and just putting it all together, so it was uh. A great event and look forward to this year, so. Thank you.
Yeah, anything from the cabinet? Hey, I want to go out of order for just a second and go back to the EOP thing. Uh, Dr. Philia or Mr. Oser, is there a reason why C Camp uh can't be included within EOP and expanded to students other than? Uh, Kate? Just a question. Thank you for writing it down, that's all.
As long as we're going out of. I so, I forgot to wish everyone a happy Constitution Day, by the way.
Thank you.
I wonder if uh. We had time to commemorate it in our classes since it's, we're so just starting out the school year. Let's forget.
All right. So. Next meeting. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be held on Thursday, September seventh at seven P M at the Esco School District. Carling Gilbert Education Center. Uh, we will not be going to close session. And this meeting is adjourned.
Institution day.
I know, yeah, I know, I just.